2024 Crestille City Council Meeting is ordered at seven o'clock PM. I ask everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to true republic, to a just, honest, sovereign nation, and to the good God, and to the good Lord.
Unfortunately, in the sixty-four year history of the city of Crestille, the city of Crestille has lost two Crestille police officers who were killed in the line of duty. These two officers made the ultimate sacrifice for the city of Crestille, and both of them were killed in the month of September. So we certainly want to honor them and remember them this evening with a moment of silence. First for Officer James W. Nink, who was killed on September sixteenth, nineteen sixty-seven, in pursuit of an armed robbery suspect who was involved in a traffic accident and was killed instantly. Sergeant Timothy A. Simonson, September twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-four, again involving an armed robbery suspect and was shot point-blank with a shotgun and was killed instantly. So we certainly want to remember them, we want to offer our condolences to their families, and we certainly want to thank them for their commitment, their service, their dedication, their loyalty to the city of Crestille as they serve the city of Crestille and make the city of Crestille a better place to live. So I would ask for a moment of silence, not only in honor of Officer Nink and Sergeant Simonson, but for all police officers, all public service people that have lost their lives in the line of duty. I would ask for a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you. Roll call please, Chris.
Chris Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Jennifer Methven. Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal. Thank you.
Okay, for the record, I did receive messages from both Alderwoman Methven and Alderman Kubal that they are unable to be here this evening, so they are excused for the meeting. Moving on to the agenda items, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the minutes of the work session held on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments?
You made, you stated two thousand, um, August twenty-four.
August twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Two thousand twenty-four, the work session. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Now you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on September third, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the September third, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, there is one agenda item that I have for you tonight. Uh, this was discussed last week at the work session. It's an ordinance that amends two sections of the city code. One is section two point seven, two point zero four zero regarding the membership and compensation of the civil service commission. And the other ordinance, uh, section is chapter two point eight, uh, section two point eight zero point four zero, compensation of the plan commission. It was discussed at the, uh, work session last week. Uh, one thing that was sort of tacked on to the end was the change to section two point seven, two point oh four zero. I looked at that, um, in drafting this ordinance and noticed that the plan commission has ha- or the civil service commission has half the meetings. They are every, uh, three months as opposed to.
Two months.
Every two months. So it's half the meetings that the plan commission has, and you voted to change the compensation to the same amount per meeting based on a twelve-month schedule. So I just don't know whether that's what you intended to do because it was sort of discussed at the very end of the discussion. So if your intent is to raise the civil service commission members to the same as the plan commission, even though they have less meetings, then this ordinance is ready for your vote and passage. If you want to think about that and discuss it, you can either put off this ordinance or you can, uh, vote to approve only the plan commission changes that are before you. And I can amend this ordinance to take the amendment to two dash seven or two point seven two out, and you can put this on a work session and discuss it. It just didn't get, I think, a full discussion because it was sort of an ad hoc, sort of added on toward the end of the discussion. So with that caveat, it's ready to go because that's what you actually did, uh, at the work session, but I just don't know whether you wanted to think about this and maybe discuss it.
I would like you on the next work session.
We discussed it at the last work session about, because they're only having three, you know, three or four meetings, the civil service, and they haven't had a raise in forever, just like the plan commission.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a point of order on that. Last week, I injected an objection to the changing of the agenda item. The agenda item was addressing the plan commission only. And according to Robert Rusevater, I've got the updated version, it's the twelfth edition. You can only change an agenda item by two-thirds vote or unanimous vote, not of which we had. So that is still an out-of-order change from the original agenda item of compensating the plan commission members about their meetings to add civil service and a raise. It is still out of order according to the Open Meetings Act, which is the parliament's pen- parliamentary procedure that, of Robert Rusevater, that the Open Meetings Act is based on. So I think the whole thing needs to be tabled until we have proper discussion and bring it to the table with the proper amendments made.
And again, I think you can rule or you can, you can vote on the plan commission portion that is in the ordinance, and I can amend it to take out the two point seven two. And we can have that on a work session and have that as a separate ordinance, depending on what you guys do at the, uh, next work session.
For the civil service.
For the civil service. That is perfectly okay, and I think that takes care of Alderman Jefferson's objection, if that's what the consensus is.
Oh, we, we even voted for the plan commission to get a boost in pay as well. So that's still adding to the agenda item something that wasn't in the agenda.
The agenda item does not have to be that specific. The agenda item was to discuss an amendment to the compensation section of the plan commission ordinance, and that's what we're doing. That was fully discussed.
It says right here, Mike, I'm, I'm reading it verbatim, where the agenda can be changed either by two-thirds vote or a vote of a majority of the entire membership or unanimous consent. And even, and you know, I'm not against anyone getting a raise. I mean, God knows, we may want up here too, but the way it has to be done ha- has to be improper in due process, and we, we're not taking due process.
The agenda item was to change the compensation section of the code. That was the agenda item, that was discussed, that was voted on in a straw vote, nothing changed on that.
I can read it to you, Alderman Jefferson. This is from the work session. It shows compensation, and the changes were in red, and we were talking compensation. And what, and part of what was written there is additional missed meetings will not be compensated for. Missing more than five scheduled meetings in a calendar year could result in dismissal. It has in there for plan commission. And since it is part of compensation, it does mention what they get paid a meeting. We're discussing compensation, so I think we were okay with changing the rate because we were talking compensation. It's right here.
We're okay with the planning commission, but we're not okay with the civil service. I think that should be tabled.
So that, that's my point. I think that.
And he is right.
Alderman Jefferson's point is well taken as to the civil service, which is why I'm suggesting that you can vote on what was on the agenda and what was discussed.
Right.
Appropriately at last, uh, last Monday's work session.
Right, but he is correct about the civil service, not about, because it does, just because it states the word compensation, we can discuss it at the work session. But you're right, civil service should not be part of that.
Okay, to the motioner. You're just wanting to make the motion for the.
Change it to a compensation for the plan commission.
I just had a question. So, Mike, you may have said it, and maybe I just missed it, but what Alderman Jefferson said regarding the change of the agenda and, and the way that's done that which should have taken place for the civil service discussion to take place, you, do you, what are your thought?
I've always taken the position that at a work session, a change in the agenda can be just made ad hoc. I don't know that it requires the two-thirds majority because nothing is being voted on at the work session. It always comes back to a final vote. So if somebody was against it and wanted to come to this meeting and voice an objection, they would have the due process and they would have the ability to do that. That's what I've always done as far as work sessions. If we were to change an agenda here tonight, I agree that that would be the proper procedure because you would be changing an agenda that has been published at which action is going to be taken. No action was to be taken last week.
Alderman Jefferson, but what, what you were reading from, does that, uh, break out that that's only applies to certain types of meetings? Or is it, is it all the meetings, all meetings that have a posted agenda should follow that?
Yeah, it, it just, it just speaks about item, meetings that have an agenda and items in the agenda.
So both meetings have an agenda.
So it, it didn't specify, so that's why I, I brought it before the council tonight, because I, I did object last week and, um, I, you know, we still move forward.
Mike, I, I, I hope you can follow up on that because I was along with what you, I was always under the impression of what you said that it's only when you vote on something that you can't change it that night, when you're just discussing. Otherwise, we have items on here like old, old business, new business. How would we be able to discuss anything under there if it's not spelled out on the agenda? So if you could possibly research that, because I was under the same impression you were, that we could talk about it, but we can't vote on it unless it's posted.
I will see if I can find either a, a PAC opinion or case law or something.
I would appreciate that, so we can get that sewn up.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin for an ordinance amending section two point eight zero point zero four zero, compensation of chapter two point eight zero, plan commission of title two, administration and personnel of the city of Crestille Code of Ordinances. Questions or comments?
And we will put the other one on in the next work session then, correct?
Correct.
Roll call please, Chris.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes, I'll go with that.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance one nine nine nine.
And that is all the agenda items that I have, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that I might have.
Motion tabling civil service discussion or no?
Um, I think you voted on the agenda item, which is to approve the ordinance. I don't think we need to table that. I think it's going to be on the next agenda.
Okay. Anything else then?
No. Any other questions that you guys might have?
Questions of the city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Moving on, city administrator Tony Graff. Good evening, Tony.
Start with this city center facility. The fire inspection and testing now has finally been completed. The last device that we had that was a problem has been repaired, and all devices are operational. The elevator inspection follow-up is scheduled for October fourteenth, and that'll be when the state fire marshal is, is also here to finalize that because we're on temporary. In regards to the windows in the clerk's office area and also the park district, we've contacted the vendors to finalize their proposals. Uh, we're also asking them to give us a proposal in regards to the hearing speakers because they seem to be a problem in trying to hear clearly the way the speaker is set up, especially the one over by, uh, the accounting office area, uh, where they do a lot of the water billing. So we'll be bringing that to a work session once we get the, uh, the three quotes and to get those windows fixed, especially the park district one and the one that's got the crack. We have noticed that the crack has gotten a little larger, so we want to get that, uh, fixed as soon as possible. But we'll bring it to a work session, uh, the cost. The Grand Prairie Water Commission, the next meeting is the third, uh, they will be voting on their budget. Uh, we did get a copy of their draft. I'll forward that over to all the city council members too, the draft, after it's been reviewed by what they call the technical advisory committee, which Ron Reedman is our representative there, and I think that meeting is Wednesday. Soon as, uh, that committee and advisory has been looked at the budget, I'll send you the, the draft. It's about sixty-one pages, but there is a summary I should be able to send you. I think it's about three pages. Uh, the budget is still within the one point four billion dollars, uh, so it hasn't changed in regards to that project. Stateville, the only thing we have coming up is the, uh, governor's office is waiting for the eighteenth of the month. That's when the, what they call the CAFSA hearing process, the ninety days is done. Uh, we should hear something probably from the governor's office in the next week or so, uh, what the next step is going to be. Uh, we do know the engineers have been working, uh, in regards to the infrastructure and, and utilities. So if we do get any type of information, we'll forward it on, uh, to the city council. Uh, part of fire protection, uh, the proposed project was here, a lot of good feedback, a lot of good information. Uh, the public hearing for the planning commission, we think the earliest we're going to be able to make that, uh, happen. Uh, so everybody will have time to look at the, the updates and revisions. We're looking at a date of November fourteenth for the, the public hearing for the fire district training facility. Route sixty-six, one hundred year anniversary tourism grant application. It's a work in progress. Ron, um, has been working with Heritage Corridor, and we're going to present something at a work session, some of the changes that were recommended by the corridor, uh, also with Route sixty-six. So the grant is in, um, we're very confident we're going to, uh, be part of that grant. That's what they told us, but we just don't know what amount will be. It's only three hundred thousand dollars for the whole area of the Heritage Corridor. So it, it will be money for three years though that they'll get to three hundred thousand. We'll see, we'll see what the revised narrative is going to be, and we'll present it to the council regards to that. Job announcements, public works director, um, review the, uh, the applicants, and I'll be meeting with Dave Strahl and Mike Ulyts. Um, we got probably about seven candidates that meet our qualifications that we've asked for. So hopefully we'll be able to do some pre-screening over the next week, ten days, and be able to bring a couple candidates to, uh, the city council, uh, for consideration. Human resource manager, we've got it scheduled. Both candidates said they could make the twenty-fourth, uh, meeting, a special meeting, a closed session, starting at six-thirty for the interviews. Community development director, the job announcement just went out. Uh, the finance director, job announcement has been put out by, uh, Gov HR. And the building inspector announcement, we're actively contacting and trying to find our candidates or say anybody interested in the building inspector, uh, position. We're, do expect another mosquito spraying, especially with all the dry weather we've been having. Um, we're thinking they'll probably hold off for about another week. They would like to get at least one rain, uh, to bring everything, so that the spray just doesn't go away in the dust. They would like it to grab onto the, to the weeds and the, and the grass and, and, and all the, all the ponds. So we're hoping to get a, a rain, then we can do another spraying. Uh, in the contract, we had six total. Uh, we've had five, um, already done, so we, we do have another, another one in the contract that we could, we could get. Water meter replacement, we are doing better. Um, we're probably at about sixty still homes that need to get, um, appointments done, but the appointments are working, uh, with the public works department. We changed the times and dates a little bit. Uh, they're doing some in the early, early morning, and we're still trying to do some in, in the, in the evenings, one day a week at least. So we are not going to weigh at the hundred meters, and hopefully in another three or four weeks, I'm going to give you a better report that maybe we're down to our, maybe twenty, twenty homes or so. The syrup, uh, plant project, uh, over the West sanitary syrup, we're up to fifty percent complete. Uh, so it's, uh, we're on schedule, uh, still for twenty twenty-six. Nothing, I don't want to jinx it. Nothing has come up that's, uh, changed, changed the plans or the schedule at this point. Supply chain is still solid for all the materials that we need for that project, so we're, we should still be on schedule and, and in budget. Planning commission, the immunity code program update, we, the immunity code is, is active for the planning commission. The next step is the clerk's been giving proposals for the, uh, computers. Um, planning on bringing it to a work session. Um, the proposals, I think you got three quotes so far, so, so we'll bring some to the work session to purchase the computers for the planning commission members, the tablets, or whatever we're, we're going to, we're going to work with. And then the, the crime lab, we're, we're still waiting for, they're still waiting probably for the answer for the rebuild, so they know where they can connect with their water and sewer, uh, and with their project. So I don't see that they knew coming to us, um, regards to the crime lab, uh, update for their building permit for at least maybe another couple more weeks. The only community, uh, a couple of community events we have coming up, we got, uh, White Oak is Saturday to twenty-eighth. Thanks nature, remind me of there. And the, uh, the seagull farm pumpkin fest is coming up on the thirteenth, nineteenth, and the twentieth. And on the agenda tonight, you do have the police service agreement that they've, um, will, uh, ask for, to pay for our officers to, to help with traffic control regards to that.
Any questions? I'm glad to answer them.
Uh, question. With the state and Stateville and Lockport looking to build, um, you know, buildings on our, on Division Street, is there any infrastructure put in there for Division Street?
Yes, we're going to be, as part of our, our plan review, we're going to be looking at the traffic, we are asking for a traffic, uh, impact study. Um, and we do know that we're going to have to do some improvements to Division Street. Definitely for the safety of the ladder trucks and things coming and going from the, uh, from that facility. Uh, we're going to need to have at least a, a third lane, uh, for left and right turn lanes coming in and out of the, uh, that training facility. So we'll definitely be doing improvements. Uh, I know on the capital projects, um, Ron is looking at improving Division Street, doing engineering, uh, late this fall for the winter to, to do the improvements from Weber to the, our, our border, which is just about where the training facility is for our improving Division Street, uh, that we own on our, on our site, in the west park.
Would that be shared cost or is that just on the citizen of the?
For the part that we, the part that's in the city that we're looking at for the capital project, that's our cost, that's our project. But for them, that'll be their cost. Any of the improvements that are going to be required to turn lanes, uh, we're probably going to have wider shoulders, just for safety purposes. So all that'll be a cost to the training facility, not to us.
Okay, and my, and my last one is, it's more of a statement than a question. Uh, I met with some of the residents that were here last week to hear the, uh, fire department.
Okay.
Presentation, and they were impressed with it. Uh, however, there is a feeling that, uh, they were kind of perturbed that a lot of people from Caroline Lakes got up and spoke and people from Lockport who are not affected. And they asked that we'll take the trainer facility in Ward two, but could you put the gun range in Ward four? So I told them I put it out there for consideration.
We definitely had a lot more discussion on the range, on the fire range.
I have a few questions. Anything, we haven't heard anything in a while about the money owed from Stateville that they owe us, that past money?
Yes, we know that their, our court of claims was eight hundred and some thousand, that has, that is approved. They want us to give them more documentation, as treasurer said before, for the additional amount, which was about a hundred thirteen thousand, that they believe information that we gave them didn't meet their standard to pay that bill. So we've asked them to reconsider, but we're also going to be asking them for the funds. If the court of claims has been approved already for eight hundred and some thousand, pay us, pay us that amount. We're not waiving a hundred thirteen thousand, we're still asking for them to review that. And we did send them another round of documents, I think it's been almost four months ago, maybe five months we sent them that?
I don't think that long, but in that, it could be longer, but I don't believe it was that long.
All right, then also I was wondering, on Weber Road, those center medians, whose responsibility are those?
The county.
Okay.
Correct, Ron?
Where are we talking?
Yeah.
Over by where the gas and washes, those center medians there, their concrete. Well, there's a lot of weeds growing out of there, I don't know if they can clean those up.
That's a county issue, I mean, it's county maintenance for those. The only medians that we have some responsibility to are the landscape medians at Renwick. We pay Bowling Brook for some of that landscaping there. Or Romeo, I'm sorry, Romeo for that, so, but I can reach out to, I'll reach out to their highway engineer.
All right, thanks. Also, where are we with the old city hall?
They gave us an update that they're moving closer to our closing date with their due diligence, hopefully in the next thirty to forty-five days. And so we're just sort of waiting for.
Ron's over there shaking his head.
Yeah, I know, he's shaking his head. He's probably got more information than I do, but that was the last stuff I had about two, four, about four or five days ago.
Well, I was just curious as far as what we have in there and what we need to clean up that's in the building and stuff like that.
I believe most of it is out. That is salvageable for us, but I'll check with Mike Ulyts again.
Oh, so then, you know, if we have everything cleaned out of there, you know, we're not going to be needing a dumpster there, so maybe we can get rid of the dumpster and not have to keep paying for a dumpster if we're done cleaning up what we have in there. Could look at that. Then also, we haven't heard anything in a while, where are we with the PFAS settlement? Anything, any news on that?
I have not got an update on when payment is going to be issued. Right now, they're talking about supplemental claims, so there are certain, there's a certain amount of funds set aside for supplemental claims. I believe that I put Mike Ulyts in touch with the folks on the legal end that are handling that to determine whether Crest Hill had enough, I guess, collateral damages related to this PFAS issue so as to qualify or want to go forward with the supplemental claim. I can actually reach out and find out, I mean, I know our claim has been put into the portal, it's been approved. All the backup has been put in there and there's been no rejection of the claim, so I just don't know when checks are going to start flowing, but I can actually ask and see whether we can get a timetable for that.
All right, and one last thing, Tony, with Vestas and Aramark, when I had talked to Ada over there, she said that our contract with them is coming up, so if our contracts can be expiring with those two vendors, could we look into other vendors and get prices for things? And then also, next work session, could we have the discussion on the explorers?
On what?
Explorers, the two explorers, the Ford explorers. We haven't had that discussion yet, so if that could be on the next work session?
Yeah, we give you an update. They're in use.
Well, we need to discuss it, what we're going to do with them, all right? I think we need to make a decision, it was brought before, so I'd like to see it at a work session for us to make a decision on it.
If I recall, that was discussed at work session and the decision was to pull them off the surplus list, is that accurate? Does that ring a bell?
No, it was talked about maybe taking and sending them to auction. And then I asked for a work session on it, we never got a work session on it. So that's the last I know of it, so that's why I'm asking if we could have a work session on it. And that's it, that's all I have. Okay, thanks Tony.
I have something. Any update, Sonia and Sikic?
Yes, I did reach out to Mary O'Connor this morning, anticipating, somebody's going to ask questions. We're trying to do a phone conference next Wednesday or Thursday, she's available. I did provide her the extra documents that she asked for, so she told me, I asked her for a timeline today too, that she's received the documents, how much longer before we at least could maybe a preliminary report back? So it'll probably only take about three weeks, because the documents we have are very thorough, the handbooks, the organizational charts, and definitions and our collective bargaining. So she's had that for about three weeks already, but she thinks after a phone conversation that most likely we could, she could probably give an update. So I would think probably by a month from now, we'll have, maybe have a memo from her, maybe even have her come to a meeting.
Okay, and also in regard to all the hiring that you're doing, are we still looking for the part-time help with Maria? Because we're supposed to have a full-timer and a part-timer for cleaning.
What was it?
For cleaning.
For cleaning? I believe we hired a part-timer already.
We did?
I think so, I'll check on that. I know we, yeah, I think we did because we did, we had a drug screen and had a physical exam for a part-timer. But I'll make sure that's what's for the, for the cleaning help.
Okay, and just for the record, that ceiling that we talked about, can you please make sure to look into why there is a leak there?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Tony. Moving on to public works department, there's nothing on the agenda tonight, so Mike Ulyts was excused, but I certainly want to extend our, as a city, our gratitude to the public works department for all the water main breaks last weekend on Inner Circle. I believe there was a total of four that were there, and the first one, five, you're right, five. The first one that was there was probably the biggest water main break that I have ever seen, which came in about three o'clock and took twelve to fifteen hours to complete it. So that one was massive. And then subsequently, because of the pressure drop in the water mains, the, they just went both directions from that point over the next couple of days. So it was a very rough weekend for our public works department, but I will tell you that they all came through with flying colors and they did a fantastic job, not only in the heat, the darkness and everything else that was out there, but that was quite an event that we had there. So I just want to offer our congratulations to them for a job well done in regards to all of those water main breaks. And Mike will be back tomorrow if anyone has any questions of him. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman, good evening, Ron.
Thank you, mayor, I have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is a look for a motion to formally reject the two thousand and twenty-four sanitary sewer cleaning and televising, send the attached rejection letter to all bidders stating the reasons for the bid rejection. We did get three bids for this, the bids came in two and a half times higher than what was budgeted. It appears through conversations with the contractor that they thought they needed to do a lot more work than what was anticipated. This being our main drain, it should be very minimum cleaning, they were assuming massive heavy cleaning, so that's kind of the discrepancy. So what we're going to do after the bids are rejected, we're going to rewrite the specs slightly to address this and put it back out for bid again.
So move, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to formally reject the two thousand and twenty-four sanitary sewer cleaning and televising and send the attached rejection letter to all bidders stating the reason for the bid rejection. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
The second item is looking for a motion to approve a resolution in support of the city of Crest Hill's application for an ITAP enhancement program grant for pedestrian school crossing upgrades on Caton Farm and Richland School crossing in the city of Crest Hill. Currently, right now, we just recently got some information that there's some money available. Some discussions have come up from residents in this area about potentially putting a crossing across Caton Farm. We have met with the school, so we're just trying to see if we can get some funding for this. We would be responsible for twenty percent of whatever the final cost would be, and I'm estimating at this point maximum about a hundred thousand, so our impact would be about a twenty thousand dollars if we got this grant. If we do accept this grant, we get it, and we decide not to move forward, that's okay too, but this is the only opportunity to gather some funding like this.
How come this was not on the agenda? Because my understanding, the school is, does not want that pedestrian, so are we?
That's not necessarily true. The school would like to have some type of crossing there. They have some, some of their concerns was providing additional signing and flashing beacons, which this would allow us to do. We still would have to meet with the school and get their buy-in, but if, you know, one of the things that they asked for is where we can find some funding. So this is an opportunity to find some funding and to potentially address that. We haven't done final plans yet, we just have a concept. They haven't approved anything, but the general concept seems okay, but there are some caveats that they are concerned about, which this funding could help us address those.
Has the police done their investigation there? Have you done the traffic study there for that?
I don't think you reached out that on, yeah.
No. Because you don't have that many kids walking in that area, and if we're going to consider for Richland, are we considering something as well for Chaney Manji, or we're just?
Yeah, and we can, I mean, right now, we have to have, there's not a lot of time, so we don't have any concepts or have any discussions with Chaney Manji. It is something that next year in September, when ITAP comes out again, we could, you know, if council would like, we can meet with them, see what their concerns are.
Have you done a study, like how many kids cross there?
There's, let's, six to ten.
This is a danger, intersection danger, like the way people drive there and the way the slope of the vine decks kind of like concern for me for kids to cross that area.
That is why there's additional lighting and signing going in to inform those people that are driving to slow down. There'll be flashing beacons at the top of the hill, that'll be activated at the time the crossing is hit to tell vehicles to slow down. Or potentially, there could be other methods that could be installed, like speed tables, which would definitely slow down traffic.
Well, we don't allow speed tables in Crest Hill, because if we can allow that, then a one-one, on Weber, people have been fighting for it for years.
On Weber?
On Borio.
Oh, on Borio, I'm sorry, I was saying Weber.
No, we've talked about it, you and I.
So, but it was an opportunity to find some funding to maybe address this issue. I do know there's some issue with crossings during when they have events at the school, like overflow parking, so.
Motion would be in order. I had a question for Ron. How did this project originate? Whose idea was it?
We got a phone call in from some residents about, you know, crossing Caton Farm, seeing if we can put a crossing in. And so we kind of put some stuff together, we talked to the school, they did have some concerns, so we, you know, right now, we're just trying to research, get some money, try to get a plan together so that we can, you know, potentially address this, address this situation. It's also my understanding, in the past, there used to be a crossing there, at some point it got removed.
So those residents that contacted the city with proposing this idea, did they also contact the school? Because that would seem like
That I don't know.
Possibly a school, you know.
That I don't know.
School involvement.
Yeah, but I mean, we did reach out and we had some conversations with the school. And as Claudia said, there were, on our original design, they had, they had some questions, comments, and concerns. And this would go, this additional funding could help address some of those comments and concerns that they have. Again, if we make this, we go for the grant application, we get the money, and they decide that it's something they still don't want, we don't have to take the grant, we can just pass on it. But this is an opportunity to get some money and it's on a tight deadline. And I would have given you more advance notice if I had it, but I just got it like two weeks ago, so.
Motion would be in order. So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to approve a resolution in support of the city of Crest Hill's application for an Illinois transportation enhancement program, ITAP grant for pedestrian school crossing upgrades on Caton Farm Road at Richland School in the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? I would like to have this project also put on a work session for council, for discussion?
Well, if we put it on a work session, then we can't go for the grant. This resolution has to be part of the application submitted on September thirtieth.
Okay, but in the meantime, there will be no more further work being put towards this project until we could have a work session? It's all, nothing is really happening yet, right?
Yeah, really, nothing's happening. All we're doing is, all I'm doing is putting an application together and submitting it, and then it'll be about three to four months before we even get an answer back if we've gotten the funding. We have, we do have the funding, then obviously, that's when we probably start coming back to council with some concepts, designs. We'd probably meet with the school at that time also. So right now, we're just trying to do an application to potentially get funding.
The state wants to know that you'll commit to, if you get the grant, that you will commit to paying the twenty percent. That's what the state's looking for as part of the application. So they want this resolution that says that you will commit to the twenty percent. Now, you can always turn down the grant if you don't want to do the project, there's nothing that forces you to accept the money, but this is just so the grant can be evaluated at the state level.
Exactly.
But we're not paying any more city money in the meantime toward a project we don't know will even go through.
Just my time.
There's been no purchases for this at all?
Nope.
No lights, no?
Nope.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Claudia Gazal?
I'm abstaining for that. And I know my reasons, I'm not going to say them publicly.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
This is just to apply for the grant.
Exactly. It's no design, no purchase, no, nothing else, just applying for the grant.
No further, not for or against the project at all, it's just the application for a potential project.
Correct, and then again, as I said, if we are awarded, that's when we would come back to council with the proposed design that would have been vetted out with the school.
I'll abstain.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
And Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries. It'll be resolution one, two, five, nine.
And the other thing I have is just some comments of work that's going to be going on. Starting tomorrow at the intersection of Oakland and Theodore, we will be patching the westbound lanes of Theodore. It's a concrete, I'm sorry, an asphalt patch and a concrete patch there for old water main breaks that we had. The state's asked us to do that. That's going to shut down the intersection at Oakland. The work should be completed by the end of the week, weather dependent on that. Notification did go out on Facebook and our website today, along with both the schools or the schools, an emergency response also was notified of this. Also, in the next couple of weeks, you'll be seeing asphalt patching going on citywide. Deconstruction, starting doing some patching. This was our MFT contract that was put out earlier this year as part of the MFT program, so they're finally getting around to do that patching. So you, again, you might, you might see something going on. And also, Circle in Green, they just finished milling all the pavement today. They're looking at Thursday to start the resurfacing, so that They're looking at Thursday to start the resurfacing, so that job is coming to an end after resurfacing. We have some restoration that needs to be done. On Park Rose, that project's pretty much complete, except for some punch list items of some sod that needs to be replaced. So, we'll be meeting with the contractor and giving them those lists and filing out that project. So, that's just some things that are going on right now that you might see some work going. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions of City Engineering?
I do. What do you see is going to be our job as a city with five water main breaks that we had so far in one week? What is the ultimate goal? Are we looking to do a study to avoid all these...
The inner circle is one of the ten locations that we identified as our worst locations. It was actually not next year's project. It was the year, it's the year after. I've actually talked to Mike last week. I'm going to actually be presenting in October to you to do the design for inner circle so that can be addressed next year, since we're having all these issues with it now, and then just kind of bypass the one that we were going to do for next year. So, the plan right now is to get, you know, get it replaced. Probably that whole section there will get done. Will we have enough money next year to do the resurfacing also? Not sure, won't know that. We'll probably include that in the bid documents, but if it comes in over budget, we can always cut that out and do the resurfacing as a follow-up. And then, as part of the water main project, just patch it, but at least get the new water main in service. So, yes, we are working on it. You know, this, we had a bad break there two years ago at the same location. We had the four other breaks that happened, you know, during the last couple of days. So, yeah, it's on our list, and it'll be coming to you for approval for the design work.
What about the rest?
The rest of...
The rest of the street? Are we going to do a study? Because continuing on patching everything is not the solution. We need a solution.
Well, the street will be reconstructed and repaired like we're doing all the other streets now, like Circle Green and Park Rose. So, all that will be reconstructed after the fact. The issue I don't know right now is if we're going to have enough money in your next year's budget to do the resurfacing and the rehab of the road at the same time. We might have to come back the following year and do that. So, that'll kind of work out through the budget process and what the costs are going to be. Because I'll also be coming to you in October with a list of the 2025 streets to be resurfaced. So, that time of year is coming up again, so it's on my radar.
Okay. And all the signs have lights on them beside the Weber one?
The, you're talking about the stone signs?
They put the dirt, and nothing has been happened since then.
Correct. A large punch list went out to the contractor on Friday, Friday of last week. There's some stone repairs he still needs to do. He still has some landscaping needs to finish. He's got some lights that need to be addressed. There's a whole gambit of things that I have. I'm on it. He did respond back to me that he received it, and he's acknowledged it. We have some issues with some of the coloring with the repairs that were done. He still has to address that. So, we're addressing this as we go. So, I mean, it'll be done before winter time comes. It's just, right now, we just have to be at the punch list, and I'm working with him. So, I'm well aware of all of the issues with all of the stones that are out there and all of the signs.
Yeah, the pictures that I sent you.
If you'd like, I can provide you the punch list so you have it. So, if anybody has a question or comment or concern, I can provide that, I can provide that to Tony, and he can, I think I, if I didn't, I can provide it to Tony, and he can send it out to you, you can see what my comments were.
And all of the pictures that I sent you, they'll be fixed?
Yes. Yeah, that was, a lot of that was already on my punch list from before, so, yeah, so they will be fixed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on, community development. Ryan Metzner, good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Just a quick bit of information to kind of add on to Tony's comments regarding the status of the sale of the old city hall. Last Tuesday, we did receive information from a representative of Quick Trip confirming that they are underway with the traffic analysis, that they would need to submit to the city for the proposed project. They're also underway with the survey of the entire property, including the topographic survey. And it's their plan to commence the preparation of the initial preliminary site plans for the project mid-October. The structure of the contract is such that they have plenty of time to do all their due diligence, and they wouldn't close on the purchase of the property until they actually work through the city's zoning approval processes and receive the necessary zoning approvals for the project from the city of Crest Hill. The project, the site's large enough that it would need to be constructed, or go through that process as a planned unit of development, which is somewhat involved. So, you know, we're looking, in my opinion, sometime next spring, at the earliest, by the time they would be in a position to close on the property and potentially move forward with construction. So, just wanted to provide that information. Other than that, if there's any other questions that you have, I'll do my best to try to address those. I don't have anything formal on the open session portion of tonight's meeting.
Any questions of community development? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on to the Police Department. Deputy Chief Jason Opeola, good evening, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have one item on the agenda. It's for a contract agreement with Seagull's Farm for their pumpkin fest. This will occur on October thirteenth, October nineteenth, and October twentieth, from the hours of noon to six P.M.
So, we only received one page on that.
Okay.
We didn't get the whole document.
I can make sure you get the...
I mean, and I don't understand why we didn't get the whole document if we're supposed to vote on it. I mean, why?
Don't know.
It just cuts off.
I can reach back out to Seagull to make sure we get the remaining parts of it.
Motion would be in order.
Well, are we voting on one page?
They don't have the whole document.
I mean, she has a point. What we're voting on? Can we have some explanation?
Special event police service agreement.
Well, can you, we only have one page.
It's the same as it's always been in the past, correct? Jason?
Yeah, this is our standard contract agreement.
All of these that we have are the same verbiage.
Did you not get the whole contract, Chris?
What the police department would download onto munico is what we would get. So, if they didn't download all of the contract on it, it would not be there. Each department has to put their own documents into munico.
Is there a motion?
Jason, just, maybe you said this. Were they requesting one officer or two?
Just one officer for that.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of a request of a special event police service agreement between the city of Crest Hill Police Department and Seagull's Cottonwood Farm at 17250 South Weber Road. Questions or comments?
Can we now on, I'll go ahead.
Can we get the copy of the rest of the...
Yeah, I don't know what happened when Chief Clerk uploaded it. I don't know if there was an error in it, but I know when she sent it, it was a full copy.
I second what you said, that's what I was going to ask.
I'm sorry, what?
I second what you said, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, so we can have that.
And just in the future, I think it's imperative that we have the entire document before we're asked to vote on something. Because lord only knows what something could be on something we don't see.
But it's on record that it's the same thing, same way as last year, correct?
Yeah, it's our standard police services agreement, and if they do hire an officer, it gets billed afterwards.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
As long as it's exactly as he stated, yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
That's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Questions of the Police Department.
Well, I don't have a question, but I would like to make a comment about the neighbors' night out. I think that it was very, very, very successful. I think Heidi did a wonderful job organizing things. Everyone, I spoke with, and I spoke to virtually everybody, because I was giving out the goodies, had a very nice time. It just was a really nice sense of community there, and you gentlemen and ladies and everybody there should be very proud of it. I thought it was really super nice, and it was nice that the older people were out there involved, and the community got to see them as well. I know I had the good fortune of working with the city attorney at my table, so we had a lot of fun. But everybody, the kids were having such a great time, so you should be very proud of that. So, thank everyone for that.
I will, and thank you for everybody that showed up today. Thank you for the community that, I had a blast. I don't know if you saw me driving around the bear, the little car.
Yeah, it was very, very nice. Really, it was truly nice.
I agree as well. It was a very good, well-attended event, and I did my best to sell as much possible T-shirt, but next year, I'll do better.
Yeah, you just did a great job of organizing and getting everything done. It was really well received by the community. So, thanks to all you officers for what you did to make that, get it off the ground.
And a special thank you to all, everyone that donated. I mean, a lot of restaurant, I mean, there was a lot of food, you know? And that was very nice of them to donate.
Great event. I'm looking forward to the next.
He's going to work the next one.
Got to make a better presentation.
He's going to sell T-shirts with me.
All right, thanks, Jason. Moving on to the Mayor's Report. I have no agenda items this evening. I do want to say congratulations to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crest Hill and Will County Highway Department for the improvements at NAP and Weber Road. And I know that Ron Wedeman had a big part representing the city of Crest Hill in those discussions also. What a difference when you're traveling southbound on Weber Road and coming around that curve. It is not as dangerous, far from as dangerous as what it was when it was just two lanes. So, I know that there was a lot of lane closures during that construction, but I think the end goal is a big improvement, a big asset to the city of Crest Hill. So, thanks to the Will County Highway Department for cooperating with the city of Crest Hill. We shared in some of the cost with the county also for the improvements at that intersection. It's a big improvement, so thanks. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions? We'll move on to our City Clerk, Christine Verche Hall. Chris?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. All I have is a public service announcement. The city of Crest Hill and Locrotown Government will be doing a free community shred event on Saturday, October 26th, from nine A.M. till noon. This will be held in the Crest Hill parking lot, and we request a limit of four boxes. And that's all I have to report.
I will be there. I have the day off, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else that, just let me know. Thank you. And then, tell her to report.
Any other questions of the clerk? All right, thanks, Chris.
Are you providing snacks and food? And, no, I'm just kidding.
Moving on to our City Treasurer's Report. Our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item I have up is the approval to revise the employee handbook language-tuition reimbursement policy and meal reimbursement policy. I'm going to have Dave Strahl handle that one.
Yeah, this is the follow-up from the previous discussion on August 26th. There were several comments from the City Council based on the language proposal that I presented. Several of the suggestions actually were included, so I did highlight those that were discussed and added the Human Resource Manager as a sign-off on the application form and drafted a promissory agreement to be included for every reimbursement application form that is included. You will note that the promissory note basically acknowledges by the employee signing that they will abide by the reimbursement rules and that any outstanding funds that are due to the city would be paid from their final paycheck. So, at least there's a formal process advising what's going to happen if there is payment necessary. And also, there's information in there about if the final check is needed to repay the city for the reimbursement, it will be a payment schedule for 12 months after the date of employment. And if that's not collect, is not satisfactory, then the city tells them, the employee, again, acknowledging that the city will use any means necessary to collect the debt, and that could impact their credit history. So, I think that this, at least, is something between the two parties of what the process is going to be. Ultimately, if we don't get the money back from the final paycheck, it will be, you know, incumbent on the city to go after that money in any means necessary, and if they want to do that from a cost-benefit analysis, that would be up to them. But I think that this addresses basically the best you can by the employee signing, what their promise is to repayment based on that schedule versus just the policy itself. So, the suggestion to include that, I think, was a good idea, and this is a result of that. Hopefully, this is satisfactory as a recommendation to include in the policy. And the meal reimbursement? There was really no modifications or suggestions to that, as I recall, from the initial proposal, so it's just presented for approval and incorporation in the manual at this point.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Personorlet, seconded by Alderman Gazal to approve to revise the employee handbook language-tuition reimbursement policy and meal reimbursement policy. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson. Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I want to thank you all for that, and especially Dave for taking council's comments and suggestions and putting them in a good order, and that was a, that's a great policy that I think was, will serve us well in the future. So, thank you, David. Next, I seek your approval on the list of bills through September 17th, 2024, in a total amount of $789,633.79.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Personorlet, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And thank you all for that. Next is just reporting of our regular overtime payroll from August 26th, 2024, through September 8th of 2024, in the amount of $263,220.13. And just a brief comment, I have placed at the, at the day as the expense reimbursement reports for IML as a reminder. As you saw in the, in the policy for reimbursement, previously from Dave, obviously, we, for the public's knowledge, we don't reimburse for any alcohol, any in-room services. We pay at the IML for the hotel stay, the parking at the hotel, any parking relative to a city function inside the city. Meals and beverages not to exceed $100 per diem. We do have, we did, we have this in the works. It was not officially formalized. However, as you're seeing that, in what you just approved on that, on that meal, that the council's consensus was on the expenses not to exceed $100 or $300 for the weekend. So, in that, we don't necessarily need a formal vote for your reimbursement prior to that, even though the current expense reads 50, because city manager, excuse me, city administrator can okay those expenses, anything that exceeds the regular per diem. But I would like to ask that it be put on the agenda for next week. Dave's going to be working on one that is going to be exclusive to IML. So, we'll have a formal policy moving forward with those new numbers in there. So, um, that's just an update on that, and, uh, apologize for that slipping through the clocks, cracks. Um, that's all I have for this evening, unless anyone has any questions?
I have a good question. Are we going to get a, a new report for the eating tax? Because we haven't got one for a while.
I can ask Garrick to, to come up with that?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business? We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business? Anybody? Committee liaison reports. Anyone? City Council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Alderman Albert tonight.
I just kind of echo what some of the other Alderman people said about the neighbors' night out. It was a great event. Kids had a, had a good time, and it was a real nice sense of community with all of us being there and having a good time. So, thanks for the Police Department, and, and thanks for everybody else for, for being there and being part of it.
Alderman Sepiti?
Uh, yeah, ditto that, I want to thank, um, Police Department, all they did for that event. Um, the residents really, um, got a lot out of it, really enjoyed it, and it was a, a job well done. Thank you.
Alderman Person Overland?
Well, I'm going to wish my little bambino at home a happy thirty-fourth birthday this week, my little dude. So, happy birthday, Jude.
Alderman Gazal?
Happy birthday to you, dude.
Alderman Jefferson?
Um, I just want to echo the sentiments about neighbors' night out. Uh, I had a great time. I saw a lot of people there, had a real good time. I, I thought it was, uh, you know, it pre, it, it represented the city in a very good way. Wish the helicopter would have came down, you know? Work on that for me next time.
It did. One of them did.
You missed the helicopter?
You missed the second one.
I missed it.
Yeah, it was there.
The second one went down.
I must have been impetuous it, that, uh-
It was there into the dark.
It was very close overhead.
You probably would have hit it.
That was a big hit. That was a big hit, the helicopter.
Alderman Dyke?
Uh, nothing else to add to what's already been said.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Stu?
Stu, sorry for two and five to six, I'm going to be right back. Um, I just wanted to bring up to, um, possibly take a look at, uh, some sort of, uh, lane markers or traffic control and/or street lighting, um, on Division, where they put the new exit and entrance to the Gas City. Um, twice, um, as I was traveling, um, east on Division, um, there were semi trucks lined up in the median, and somebody pulled out to make a left-hand turn to go eastbound on Division, and I nearly got run off the road twice. There's no, there's no lane markers, there's no, there's no traffic control, and there's no streetlights. So, in dark, it's pitch black there. Um, and then, with trucks lined up waiting to turn in left, they can't, somebody trying to turn out can't see the traffic going eastbound. Um, so I'd like to see if we can get something done there, please. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Anybody else? All right, there is a need for an executive session. Mike?
Uh, yeah, we need an executive session tonight under five I L T S one twenty-two C one, uh, regarding appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for an executive session for two C one. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we'll be going into our executive session at eight oh eight P.M.